I'd like to call the General Committee meeting to all. Do everybody please rise for the prayer?
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for guiding us through a smooth opening to our summer programs. We ask that you continue to watch over those in our school board family as they enjoy their summer break. We are grateful for those teachers and staff members who stepped up to work with our students in our summer programs. We ask that you bless them for their dedication. Guide us now as we prepare for the coming school year and help us to focus on best practices for teaching and learning that will continue the forward movement of our district. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Mr. Long, would you please send a pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lametta, would you do the roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mrs. Azavado, Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Egan?
Yes.
Mrs. Jackson?
Here.
Mrs. Lemoine?
Here.
Mrs. Dyson?
Here.
Mr. England?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
And Mrs. White?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Lametta. The next item is the Super News. We have Ms. Alex Snyder. Good afternoon.
Good evening, board members. In your folders for this evening marked as number four, you'll see your communications report for the very beginning. It was not that long ago that we saw you. We had a few press releases. Barry Lemoine with the NOLA.com, the Times Big Un got some great coverage of both our Shawman High School graduation as well as the Reading Association awarding various school administrators, which was really nice. On the second page, you'll see our social media for the last two weeks since our last communications report. And I don't have it here, but YouTube with the Parish Educational Network livestreamed graduation with over 1,000 viewers throughout graduation. So that's another really great statistic just for you guys to know. Before we do Super News, I did just want to make you all aware, in your packets you have our upcoming publications. These are the publications that we did last year and we'll be redoing these publications for the 2019-2020 school year. The first is at your fingertips, which is the community brochure within your packet. And as you remember, last year, contact information of our board members was shared with community members and parents in this brochure. We do have a form for you all to fill out with just your preferred contact, preferred name. If you could please fill that out and hand that to Shelby at the end of this evening, that would be much appreciated. The other two documents that we shared with our family at the beginning of last year, and we'll do so again at the beginning of this year, is going to be our school calendar, which you have in your packets, as well as the quality report, which was shared with the community members at our Day of Reflection breakfast. So our families and community members can look forward to seeing these publications again at the beginning of the 2019-2020 school year. We've been busy, yes, sir. And without further ado, I'm gonna send this back to the men of Penn for this month's Super News.
And now from the desk of the superintendent's office, it's time for Super News.
Hi, I'm Alex Snyder.
And I'm Barry Lemoine. And welcome to Super News, where we share some of the good things going on in our school system. We're broadcasting today from the Shawman High School Culture Arts Center on the set of Once Upon a Mattress.
On today's show, we'll begin with the end, as we take a look at some of the festivities that were a part of our end-of-school ceremonies. Our kindergarten classes, our fifth graders, and our eighth graders all took part in the closing ceremonies, well-prepared to move on to the next chapter of their educational journeys. Congratulations to all who took part in these special events.
The Shawman High School class of 2018 also took part in a special event. The commencement exercises held at the UNO Lakefront Arena. Over 400 hours took part in graduation, led by class valedictorian Emily Vu. This year's class earned millions of dollars in scholarship money, and we're confident that they will enter college and careers ready to succeed. Congratulations.
When you step out of here, I want you to remember where you came from and have tomorrow be continuation of the dreams and hard work you put in today. I'm so proud of us, and I want all of us to keep making memories and growing to the people we always dreamed of being. I imagine a world filled with super heroes, so let's all become one.
And while these graduates were walking across the stage, many other younger students were also being honored for a number of awards. Reading and writing were celebrated at our Corner Awards, as well as the Reading Association's Young Authors Event. While our visual arts were honored at this year's Cultural Arts Awards. Congratulations to these gifted students and all of those who organize these ceremonies that pay tribute to those who excel in a number of different disciplines.
Cultivating academic interest and talent are also at the heart of several programs taking place this summer, like our MoMA Center's Summer STEM Camp. Aimed at providing hands-on and fun learning activities in the areas of science and technology, the camp has expanded this year by popular demand. It's a great way to bring learning to life for our elementary and middle school students.
Our summer enrichment program also includes several avenues to help keep our students engaged in the learning process. Research has shown that students who participate in academics throughout the summer months are better prepared to begin the next school year in the fall. With that in mind, we encourage our students to participate in enrichment activities, like our summer reading program, for instance, providing students and families an opportunity to read a wide array of books that align with their upcoming curriculum. For our elementary and our middle school students, IXL and Lexia challenge our students in math and reading. For more info on these programs, visit our website below.
An auditorium is also a hub of activity, as the summer swim program continues to help youngsters learn the basics of swimming and water safety. This program is cool in more ways than one, and a great opportunity for our students to have fun, exercise, and grow more confident in the water.
Our summer academy also provides opportunities for students, especially those who enjoy being onstage or those that work behind the scenes in theater. Here, we see some of the excitement taking place as these singers, dancers, and techies gear up for the annual summer production. This year's show, Once Upon a Mattress, promises to bring smiles and laughter to our audiences. This musical comedy will run for two weekends, from June 21st through the 30th. To purchase tickets or for more information, visit our district website.
Well, that's about all the time we have for today, but before we go, we wanted to remind everyone that the next school year will begin on?
August 8th.
For all of our returning students. More information will be mailed home this summer, including our student handbooks and our calendar of events.
Thanks for tuning in, and we'll see you next time on Super News.
Where we always let?
The Super News Roll.
We'll see you next time.
Have a good summer.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Fantastic job. Keep it up.
Mr. England?
Could I have one for you, please?
Sure.
This is just part of some good news for the school board. Ms. Darlene Azavado is not here tonight because her daughter gave birth to a baby boy today. So congratulations to Ms. Azavado and her daughter and her whole family. And we know Ms. Vochet is gonna eventually be watching this viewing or this meeting, and so on behalf of all of the members, we just want to say that you recover very quickly, Ms. Vochet, and we miss you, and we're looking forward to your coming back. Thank you. But we have Ms. Lametta, who's doing an excellent job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dyson. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Ms. Lemoine?
I also wanted to congratulate Ms. LaPrae Schneider, who was honored by the St. Bernard Reading Association with the Annual Media Award. So congratulations. Thank you for your hard work promoting all the great things happening in the school district. So congratulations.
And that's all the board. No, Ms. Snyder. Thank you. Okay, who wants anyone else before I go? Okay, move on to item number five, it's education. Ms. Lemoine?
Thank you, Mr. England. Agenda item number five is an update of the summer programs, and we have Ms. Lametta.
Yes, good evening. This is a perfect item for me today because Ms. Snyder and Mr. Lemoine did the heavy lifting for the summer programs and gave you the wonderful video and audio to back up the programs. And this is basically just listing up more detail of each program, including the number of students who are attending each program, and then the start and end dates of the programs that have already begun. And then the final item, of course, is the Once Upon a Mattress, as they said, opening June 21st and then closing June 30th. So it's just some more detail for you, but they've outlined the summer programs on the Super News.
Any questions for Ms. Lametta?
Just a comment. How things have changed from many years ago, when I was in school, summer was like there was nothing for children to do except play or maybe catch a bookmobile, but that's about it. But it's great that we have so many activities for students and residents during the summer. It's great. Thank you.
Mr. Warner?
I just wanted to ask, do they have any more openings in session two with a swimming program?
Yes, sir. We do have a few more openings, and we do it by time slot, 12 to 1, 1 to 2, 2 to 3, and 3 to 4. So if they call 301-2000 and ask for Yvette McNamara, she can let the parents know what sessions are open. We have a handful of more openings.
Like Mr. Long said, and this is a great program, a swimming program. Very important, too. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Right. Thank you, Ms. Lametta, for that robust report. And we'll move along to agenda item number six, which is executive. Mr. Long?
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Lemoine. It's personnel changes, item six, for the month of June. And this is for informational purposes only. Give you a minute to look over if you have any questions. I'm sure Ms. Lametta is ready to...
And I did just want to add one thing to the personnel changes. As you know, when Kara Colburn was selected as the Assistant Principal for N. Petrus Middle School, that did leave an opening in the instructional coach position. We did advertise an interview for that, and Mrs. Julie Abidi was selected as the instructional coach for N. Petrus Middle School, a dedicated, very talented teacher who definitely will help the students and the teachers grow at N. Petrus Middle School. Additionally, St. Bernard Middle School had an opening in the instructional coach position, and Mrs. Rebecca Noto was selected for that position. Again, a positive educator who really is committed to St. Bernard Middle School and committed to the growth of teachers and students, and they both will be wonderful additions to leadership teams at the school and to the district as well.
Thank you, Ms. Lametta. Any comments, questions? Ms. Dyson?
Just a congratulations to Ms. Abidi and Ms. Noto. You know, as you said, they're gonna do very well as instructional coaches, both are very wonderful teachers, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Dyson. Anybody, anyone else? Okay. We'll move on to item seven. Mr. Egan?
Oh, couldn't find the button. Okay. We have the renewal of the excess workers' compensation insurance for the fiscal year July 1st, 2019, through June 30th, 2020. My gentlemen?
Thank you. In your package, you have detail of our recommendation. What this is, is the excess insurance policy on our workers' compensation program. As you know, we are self-insured for workers' compensation, but we do have excess insurance to protect us from large claims if it exceeds a certain amount, in this case $450,000, over the life of the claim. So we purchased this excess insurance to protect us in that respect. On the second page of your handout, it shows the historical perspective of the last several years. The premiums are the highlighted section towards the bottom, and the premium for next year that has been quoted is $45,621. This usually goes up every year because the premium is basically based on salaries of our employees, which tend to increase every year. But this is our recommendation. We have a good friend, Mr. Richard A. Clemmons from Clemmons Insurance Services here, who did all the legwork for us on this, and he is our agent of record for insurance matters, so he'll be happy to answer any questions, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Do we have any questions or comments from anyone? Mr. Long?
I'll just make a motion to accept the recommendation of Star Insurance for our excess workers' comp insurance.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Egan?
I'll second.
Mr. Warner? Thank you. All right. You can vote now.
Will we can vote?
Okay. Please vote your machines.
Motion passes 10-0.
Thank you. The next is the bid tabulation for the Official Journal. We have Mr. Warner.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. We'll go on to item number eight. Mr. Fernandez, I see you still standing here for this one?
Yeah, well, I guess you stuck with me for the remainder. Okay, in your package, you have the extensive bid tabulation for Official Journal. We are recommending the St. Bernard Voice as the Official Journal for the school board for the next fiscal year.
I'll also move...
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Dyson, a second by Mr. England. Any other debate or comments or questions?
Mrs. Dyson?
Is this the same as last year?
Please disagree with that. They charge you for this.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? I have a question. Did anybody else put in a bid?
No, sir.
That makes it easier.
Yeah, well, according to law, there's really only one paper in a parish. There's certain criteria a newspaper has to meet in order to be eligible to be an Official Journal, and it just so happens, as the law is currently, the St. Bernard Voice enjoys that distinction.
Got it.
And they've served us well in the past, and they've always been...
Oh, absolutely.
A good partner with the school system. So we're very pleased to continue with them.
So a motion by Mrs. Dyson, a second by Mr. England. Everybody cast their votes.
Motion passes 10-0.
All right. We'll move right along to item number nine. Bid tabulation for vehicle paint and repairs. Mr. Fernandez?
Sir. Okay, in your package, you have the tabulation. It's page two of the exhibit. We had two bidders for these services pending in minor body repairs, and we are recommending that the board choose Cochrath as the successful bidder.
Make a motion.
Okay. We got a motion by Mr. Smith.
I have a second.
Second by Mrs. White. Do we have any discussion? Mr. Dyson?
Mr. Fernandez, how does this bid compare to last year's per hourly rate?
It's comparable. Cochrath came down a little bit on that rate, so...
So this is a cheaper rate than last year?
What we did was we restructured the bid. We took some things out that we very rarely use, services we very rarely use, and we're gonna do those outside the bid, but I think it's comparable. It's about the same.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? So we have a motion by Mrs. Smith to go with the lowest bidder, second by Ms. White. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes 10-0.
All right. Item number 10, bid tabulation for bus parts. Mr. Fernandez?
Okay. In your package, you have the tabulation for bus parts for fiscal year 2019-2020. We had several bidders. This is bid by groups, and you'll see the tabulation on page two, and we're recommending the low bidder on each item, on each group.
All right. Take a minute.
Make a motion.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Smith. Second by Ms. Jackson. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Long?
By groups, you mean?
What we do is there's a vast array of auto parts that they buy, and they're seven to groups, like engines and carburetors and things of that nature. So what we do is we ask them to present their catalog, and we give them a sample of the most purchased items in different group categories, and we ask them to give us prices for those individual items that are most purchased. We come up with an average price, and they give us a discount rate on each group, and the low group price overall in that individual group goes to that bidder. So to have opportunities in each group to win, it's not an all or nothing bid, in other words.
Okay, so some parts can be purchased from one vendor and maybe other parts can be purchased from another vendor?
Correct. And as a group also, although we do a sample of items that we get prices on, we do have access to buy from the entire catalog using the discount rate that they've given us.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Got a motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mrs. Jackson. Please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
All right. Item number 11, tabulation for gas, diesel, lubricating oil, transmission fluid, and antifreeze.
In your package, you have the tabulation for those items as well. We are recommending the low bidder for gasoline, which is Fuel Man, Fleet Four. For the other items, we had one bidder for lubricating oil, but they had to be disqualified because they didn't comply with all the conditions of the bid, so we had to disqualify the bid. And we had no bidders for antifreeze and transmission fluid. So what we're gonna do, as we look at our past history, we buy relatively little of those amounts in comparison to the entire gasoline bid, maybe a total of $7,000 to $10,000 a year. So what we're gonna do for those items for this coming year, we're going to get quotes as we purchase those items, and we'll go to different vendors and get quotes and go with the low quote. So what we're only awarding on this, we are awarding the gasoline unleaded and diesel gasoline to Fuel Man. The other items, we're not gonna award to anyone for lack of a competent bidder, as they say, and we'll get quotes for that throughout the year going forward for those items. But none of those items will reach the level where it requires a bid, so...
Okay. I'll make a motion if we send this to the board with the recommendation.
All right. Motion by Ms. England, second by Mrs. Dyson. Any questions from the board? No questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
And finally, Mr. Fernandez, bid tabulation for musical instruments. Is that a missed one?
Well, no, you're right. Music, I'm sorry.
Okay.
It's next, but there's one more behind that. In your package are the tabulation for musical instruments. You see, there's all the different musical instruments that we might purchase throughout the next year. And the only thing I want to bring to your attention is some of these items, as you notice, for instance, the first six or seven items, the fifth column bidder, they did not meet the specifications, so some of these items were disqualified. The bidder overall wasn't disqualified, but some of their bids on individual items were disqualified because they did not meet the specifications of those particular instruments. But we are recommending that we award to the lowest competent bidder on every item.
And French homes are expensive, huh?
Yes, sir. All of them are expensive.
All right. Do we have any questions from the board? Yes, Mr. Long?
For students that are in the band, we supply all the instruments?
Some students purchase their own instruments. We also have instruments available for them to use if they are not able to do so.
Okay. Why would they want to purchase their own? I mean, they think it would be a better quality, or they can play better on a certain instrument?
I don't know.
I'm just curious.
Some people just like to possess their own instrument.
Oh, I see.
Or they might continue on. They might want to make a career of it.
So the instruments that we supply them with, they have to leave them at the school site, or they take them home?
I believe they usually, they might allow them to take them home in certain instances, but they have to...
Be accountable for them.
Be accountable for the instrument.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Egan? I mean, I'm sorry. Mr. England?
That's okay. He's good-looking over there. Mr. Fernandez, what about the refurbishing of these instruments that's been being used every year? You know, do we refurbish some of these instruments?
Yes, sir. We do do repairs to the instruments throughout the year. This is just to fill holes in the instruments that can't be repaired, or if we have an increase in participation, we might need additional instruments.
All right. That makes sense.
Yes. But we do have regularly through the year need to send instruments out for repair, as you said.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions from the board?
Make a motion, send it to the board.
All right. We got a motion from Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Long. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes 10-0.
One more, Mr. Fernandez.
Yes, sir.
Bid tabulation for solid waste collection and disposal.
Okay. In your package, you have the tabulation for solid waste and disposal services for the next year. We have bid a, we had asked the bidders to provide a price for next year and also to subsequent years for renewal, should we choose to exercise the option. And we had five bidders, and we are recommending the low bidder, which is IV Waste.
All right. So, Ms. Dyson?
So, Ms. Dyson?
Mr. Fernandez, so the lowest bid was lowest on the first, second, and third, you're correct?
Yes, sir.
On every bid?
I mean, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay. Well, based on that, on the lowest bid, I would like to make a motion that we send to the full board, the recommendation of the lowest bid for the next three years for IV Waste LLC.
Okay. Okay, I got a motion by Mrs. Dyson, seconded by Mrs. Lamore, but Mr. Long, you have the floor.
My question was answered.
Okay, okay. Any other questions? Anybody else? All right. We have a first and second. Please cast your vote.
Motion passes ten zero.
All right, so we'll move on to item number 14, superintendent's recommendations.
Well, let's say it is assistant superintendent's recommendations.
Yes, yes, please, let's say that. And like Ms. Dyson said...
Get more pain, right?
Of course. Like Ms. Dyson said...
Acting superintendent? No?
Yes, Ms. Vochet is recovering well, and I've let her know everyone has wished her well, and everyone has asked what can they do, how can they help, and she's one of the strongest people I know. So I know the surgery she has gone through, you know, takes some time to recover, but she will be, I'm sure, recovered quicker than most, so we do look forward to her coming back. And I just wanted to let everyone know, you may have noticed a small construction project on the main campus of Chelmsford High School, and basically we are changing the elevation of the grease trap in the back part of the cafeteria for better drainage, to facilitate better drainage, and we do expect to finish that within the next two weeks. So just to give you all an update on that. And that's it.
That's it?
That's it.
Anything from board members before we adjourn? Well, the only thing I have to say, we just wish Ms. Vochet a speed to recover. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Campbell, second. Second by Ms. Dyson. All in favor? This means adjourn. Good night, everyone.